Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council this Monday, March 4th, 2019 at 7:05 PM. Ms. Derry, would you call her, please?
A.C. Brown?
Here.
Ralph Maker?
Here.
Rod Powell?
Here.
Tim Terry?
Yes, here, here.
We have four of them.
Thank you. If you would please stand for our prayer, uh, for the ladies tonight. Tonight, our prayer is led by Associate Pastor Jeff Ivey, First Baptist Church, and I'll ask Tom Marsh to lead us in our pledge.
Father, we thank you. Lord, we thank you for the gift of life, Lord, the ability to be here today. Lord, we thank you for, um, the gift of this town of Greenwood that we all enjoy. And Father, we thank you for these leaders on our city council, for our mayor. And Father, we pray that you would guide them, give them wisdom and decisions they make tonight and the decisions they may make, um, in the future. Father, we do thank you so much for the time they give, and just pray your blessings upon them and their families. And, uh, Lord, again, just pray for your guidance tonight. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Father, we lead you into the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, evening. At this time, I would ask the council's approval of the minutes for February 2, 2019, Council Meeting. Take a moment, please, to meet here.
Let's move, we'll pass a little, a few little minutes to record.
Sorry.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second.
A.C. Brown?
Yes.
Ralph Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is recognitions and acknowledgements. And it is an extreme pleasure, if I can find it, all the fun stuff I'm looking for, uh, to recognize a young man tonight. And I have a rather lengthy proclamation, but I'm gonna make him stand up here with me, because that's how we do this. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Isaiah Blue. You're gonna hear a lot about him. You're gonna hear a lot about him in just a minute, as I can read this. And you're also gonna hear and know and read about him in the future, I promise you. I gotta tell you this real quick, I was, we were at Greenwood High School, uh, just recently, I guess a month or so ago, a couple months ago, with what we were, is a, it's a program called Access. And they come to town, they kind of look, work with the city, and they talk to us about what the city needs, and we did a couple, I think we did three meetings, and one of those meetings was held at the high school, and there were several high school students, I don't know how many, but there was probably twenty or maybe thirty high school students. And it was good, they, they weren't real open with questions at first, and I think Isaiah might have been the first question and the last question asked, but it was a, they were pretty quiet for most part. But immediately after it was over, they, they paid attention very well, and it was a good meeting, and we got a lot of good ideas from those students. Soon as the bell, or soon as the meeting was adjourned, I can tell you, and there's nothing bad against the other students, but they were, they left. They, they went back to class, or they went wherever they were supposed to go and, and did those things. Isaiah skipped the next class, I don't know if you know that yet. This young man stayed, introduced himself, uh, I had no, I really didn't know anything about him too much, but I learned a lot real quick. He introduced himself, and we stood and talked about issues of the city, and I said, "Tell me you're going to college, so you're not gonna be here to run for mayor anytime soon." And he assured me that that was not the case, that was not his goal in life. Uh, he has a lot loftier goals than that, I promise you. So, I just fell in love with him, I'm sorry, I did. I thought, "If I need another son, I've got three already, and I'm gonna take this guy." You impressed me very much. Yes, sir. So, I'm gonna read this proclamation, if that's okay. You gotta stand right here, and you may get there to help me with the big ones. Okay? I have to have these cheaters on. This is a proclamation, "On behalf of the people of Greenwood, City of Greenwood, Arkansas, by his honor, the Mayor Doug Kinzler, that hereby publicly recognize Isaiah Blue." And by the way, it's not not just the coolest name in the world, I mean, how can you go wrong? I guess Mama had something to do with Isaiah, and Mr. Blue had something to do with it.
Not too shy of the whole thing.
Okay. That's all the credits you're taking. Whereas, the United States Naval Academy is a four-year co-educational federal service academy adjacent to Annapolis, Maryland. Established in October the 10th, 1845, under Secretary of the Navy of Georgia, George Bancroft, it is the second oldest of the United States five service academies, and educates officers who are commissioned primarily into the United States Navy and the United States Marine Corps. And whereas, candidates for admissions generally must both apply to the academy and receive a nomination, usually from a member of Congress. Students are then officers in training. And whereas, Isaiah began his exploration into the service academies during the eighth grade. I was not thinking about stuff like that in the day. He attended his first academy day held by Congressman Steve Womack in the spring of his freshman year, and has attended one year ever since then. He learned that the U.S. Academies are not only looking for intelligent, but a well-rounded candidate. And whereas, Isaiah knew early on, the Naval Academy would be in his sights and was determined to achieve that goal, taking the required AP and honors course, including a secondary language, calculus, I can barely say that, and physics, along with earning competitive scores in both the SAT and ACT. He was involved in his community through volunteering in his church, as well as many different school organizations and athletics. He played in three state championship football games and one state championship baseball game. And whereas, Isaiah began preliminary applications during January of his junior year, he attended both Arkansas Voice State and the Naval Academy Summer Seminarium. By August, he had completed his paper application. Then in October, he received an early acceptance letter to the U.S. Merchant Marine Academy. And whereas, after applying for nominations from Congressman Steve Womack, Senator John Bozeman, and Senator Tom Cotton, and interviewing with all respective boards, Isaiah received ten nominations to the service academies. And whereas, on February 6th, 2019, Isaiah received a call from Congressman Steve Womack stating that he had received an appointment for the U.S. Naval Academy vice of 2023. I'm gonna elaborate on that just a little bit, because Congressman's not here, and I know you want me to. Right? Right, Doc? So, I've heard this story three times from the Congressman so far, and it's, it's not changed much, but he basically was telling me, and he told the class, uh, the students at the high school the other day, when he called Isaiah, he got a quote-unquote, and this is not anything to be embarrassed about, this, this is cool, a quote-unquote, uh, emotional response. He said he, he, he told him what he was doing, there was a little bit of silence, and Isaiah came back on, in, on, and apologized to the Congressman for being emotional. Well, I think we could all assume that that would happen to us, too. And the Congressman related us to, or kind of compared it to a student that gets a call from University of Arkansas, or wherever, I don't know, wherever it is, and when you're excited, but you're probably not the emotional level that you might be if you called, say you've got an appointment to the Naval Academy. So, I think that's pretty awesome. The second part of that story is a little bit funnier, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Blue. Uh, I believe the call came to her, the quote, the, the, what I heard, and you can fix this later if you like, she's in her hills, walking her dogs, outside in the rain, and there's no fence, I think your fence is down or something, and you're trying to answer the phone at the same time when the Congressman calls, and you two, obviously, are a little bit emotional. So, I don't know if it was because of the dog or the dragon, or...
All of it.
So, he tells that story, but he tells it with a lot of enthusiasm and passion himself, too, so I think that's pretty cool, uh, just to know somebody that got their call. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of junior high school student Isaiah Blue. And now, therefore, I, Doug Kinzler, Mayor of the great city of Greenwood, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim March the 4th, 2019, as Isaiah Blue Day. Given under my hand and fixed with a seal, great city of Greenwood, Arkansas, I've signed it in our city clerk treasurer's attested. So, give this young man a round of applause. There's a couple of things to give him, and I have a little bit of joke, and it keeps on here tonight, so I'll go ahead and do it again. This, have I given you one of these jokes? Okay. This is gonna be nothing compared to all the medals that will warm your chest in the future, but this is a city of Greenwood, fan feels like home, and you, of course, are in our, in our thoughts and our prayers as you go off and do your thing. I, I do wanna say I watched your face the other day when Congressman was explaining the things that you could be involved in, and, and terror, and the, and the crowd, and all of that as part of it, and so, we're, we're praying for you, and this city will continue to pray for you, I promise. This is the key to the city. Now, no, you cannot get in my office with it. It doesn't fit the door. Uh, exactly. Uh, this, this is literally a, a reminder to you, and a, hopefully, that you, that you see and understand that when you look at this, or wherever you do with it, you can fold your backpack, whatever you wanna do with it, but if you ever, if it ever drops in its own, so it's kinda heavy, know, uh, I have the privilege of, of representing ten thousand or so people, and I can promise you, not everybody knows about this, but they're going to, they're gonna know it, okay? They're gonna be praying for you, and they are going to, uh, this is the key of their hearts, is what I'm trying to say, instead of stumbling around too much. It's the key to the heart of the city, and so, we want you to have this, and we're so proud of you. Uh, this is, this is big, this is huge, so, God bless you and everything you're gonna have to suffer. Well...
Well, y'all are the people that have literally been my aspirations, um, from the people like, you know, great men like Pastor, I, you guys are the foundations of my character of my life. Tim Terry, I've watched, listened to him all my, all my life. So, you, you listen to people like them, these are the people that I've looked towards for guidance and success my whole life. I just wanna thank you for everything.
Now, as I told you on the phone, you have to stay for the next four hours. You don't have to, you can leave at any time you want, we won't say much. Pastor Ivan's leaving. I think he's here. Lady Rich, he picked up a little child there right there. Uh, he knows me too well. And thank you, family, for being here, and I think you are doing, well, I know you are, but you're doing it. Okay, you made reports, now to the fun stuff. Uh, South Michigan Boys and Girls Club, Mr. Sunday stuck his head in my door, in my office a minute ago, and wanted to know if I'm gonna change places with him, and I said, "No, you go back and referee what you're doing at the club." So, he's not here, you haven't read the report, so if you have any questions, as always, uh, get those back to myself or to Kenny, and then give them to Kenny. That's our C.A., I don't see Lisa or anybody, you haven't read the report from them, things are going well. I have a meeting next week with Lisa and, uh, me and, I think, the regional director next week, so we'll be talking about some things coming up at home with the center, partners, commission. Uh, do you wanna speak tonight, or just have, ask any questions if you got any?
Any questions?
Joel's here. Chairman? Good? Thank you, sir. Waterways Water Commission, Mr. Bailey is here, I know, did you wanna address the council, or?
Um, yeah, just real quick.
Okay.
I've got a written report, I'd like to make one correction. Uh, late in the year, I said we're gonna make an offer to James Fork, 267 acre, it's actually 247, getting old, maybe getting a fall, so it's 247 acre. Uh, I've already talked with some people with James Fork, talked, Stan O'Quinn, who's on their board, talked Saturday with, uh, Dr. Burdus, formerly on their board, and he, he volunteered to go out, and we go out and meet with their board, we'll bring an offer to them probably this week. Their board does not meet every month, they, irregular, and when they do meet, uh, I'll try to go out there with Dr. Burdus and discuss it with them. Uh, we added a new commission member last week, Wayne Robb joined as commission member to fill the vacant position left by Steve Rader. And we started the process of getting easements, or soon will start the process of getting easements for water and sewer extensions between Liberty Drive and Denver Street. Get those easements, he'll do the final engineering throughout the bids. Uh, we're gonna request additional separate bid items for getting water under 71 over where the new fire station's going. And so, if the bid's coming good enough, we have the money, we'll go ahead and get that done at the same time, that should be, maybe start to fall. I mean, it depends on how, these progress, probably six months you start it. Do you have any questions?
What was the total acre we were talking about, about 70?
Um, we are changing the acres that, that Mr. Burd has plus two other people, it's 35.96. We're going down to Denver and, and trying to acquire some other acreages. We're, uh, looking at three tracts owned by Damon Sadler, there on Denver Street, plus seven acres by Mount Zion Church, plus three tracts across the, uh, on, across 71, actually on Denver, not Denver, on Mount Zion, including, I think, two owned by the city, point of session, one of Mr. Rundell. Happy Mr. Rundell, y'all run the, the fire department the other side of him. And, uh, I think it totals up to about 260 or so acres. And buy two existing customers, uh, our department side has a building on it, who's a customer of James Fork, so we got by them and Mr. Sadler's, as, as, um, buy a mountain existing customer. James Fork will continue to serve those for a while. Probably they'll continue to serve the office building until the fire station starts, and then, when the fire station goes in, let's hook up to our water lines, which hopefully is there by then. Anything else?
John, as you're discussing that with, with James Fork, are you gonna visit with them about, I mean, depending on their reaction, I guess, to your, to your offer, are you gonna talk about splitting it up in some form or not, or are you just gonna go, I know you're presenting it that way now, but totally?
Um, you mean the 35.96 splitting it up, or?
Right, or, or, yeah, I mean, if, if, and you don't know till you talk to them.
Right, and they were, they wanted to buy it all.
Right.
But, uh, and we, for Burd, just to buy the 35.96, but our rationale is, they're wanting 11 times what, of course, they're paying, they're probably thinking that's real, and we don't wanna pay that much on the first one out. We pay that much on the first purchase, we think we're gonna be paying top dollar, for, for, yeah, bad president. So, we found some land that for development purposes, that we will need ultimately one day, but for development purposes, it's not the wisest valuable, and so, hopefully, when we mix the super valuable with the less valuable, we can get a more reasonable first price. That's the right, plus we might get fire department land, uh, as well, uh, that's the rationale. And if they want us to sell us at around 267 for just the Burd property up there, that's fine, too, but we'll play it on my all, or try to get some type of deal. And if they're not interested at all, we'll talk about us doing sewer and fire, and then doing the water up there at the intersection of 70, at the intersection of 71, Tinsburg. We'll talk that as an option, well.
Anything else, council? Thank you, sir, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, this time on the agenda, we're at their citizen forum, I didn't get that. The clipboard?
Or?
Make the, make the citizen here do something, earn his keep.
I didn't sit up there, actually.
Okay, no one's on it. Uh, as always, I give an opportunity, if you weren't aware of being able to speak tonight, uh, open forum, a citizen, a citizen, you typically sign that, and we give you five minutes to speak, your, your, uh, whatever you talk to the council about, so if you'd like to do that at this time, we would acknowledge that. Okay? Well, thank you, we'll move on. Agenda additions? Council, not gonna leave it, but we have, uh, maybe twice in the last three years, so we have what you have on your agenda.
We have the proclamation.
There you go, there you go.
I'm gonna make the recognition.
Yeah, it's gonna make something, yeah, paper, they will get that in the paper, no agenda addition. Uh, so, we move on to old business, city attorney, Mr. Handby, ordinance for possession and handling explosive materials, third.
You have to let me, Mark, because I'm gonna take items off you.
Look at you.
Number, number one, uh, there was some changes brought in my office flight last week, uh, that I was not aware of, I just checked in my secretary, and she said, "Yeah, they are out there." She thought she'd be able to, that she could die. Uh, I'm visiting with, um, Pam, and he indicated that he would, just wants us to tag this for 30 days. I don't think there's significant changes, but I'll have to prefer reading next month, so I'll press a motion to tag one until next month.
Make that motion, table. Motion to second table.
Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
That's Terry?
Yes.
Okay, okay, sorry. One to sound, or just check.
Yes?
Yes, okay, thank you. Very good. Okay, well, you're not gonna like me, because we are at the, uh, part of the meeting where it's the state of the city, and if you need to eat supper or anything, I advise you, go ahead and do that now.
Hang on a minute, I'm gonna blow a bar.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I was, while I'm giving this, and I'll, and I'll set the stage for that. If you're wondering what the council was doing while I'm speaking, right now, replacing vets. Uh, and, well, they did replace them all day, I think there was a line set earlier today, "This is all about how long I can speak." For those of you that know me, specifically Jeff Ivey, he left for that reason. I was off on that, but, uh, anyway, is everybody good to go?
Pretty good.
Okay, before the time clock, the clock starts, I had to open with a horrible, terrible joke, because that's, that's the way it's been for the last...
No, this can't.
No, this, no, this does not count. No, 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 start. So, a bear walks into a restaurant to order a meal, somebody better heard, and, uh, and says to the waiter, or the waiter says, "What can I help you with?", and he says, "I'd like to place more," and he said, "Okay, well, we'll fly." And the bear says, "I believe I'd like a cheese...burger." And the waiter says, "Okay, and what's with the big paws?", and he said, "Well, I'm a bear." Big paws. Really?
Now, that should count.
Now, that, take your hands. Wow, that's a tough grab. They give me a hold of it. Well, maybe not, maybe not.
The gong is still.
Moving on to more serious stuff. Um, our future is regional, and it is my greatest honor and privilege to serve as mayor of what I really believe, truly believe, is the greatest city in the world. Being re-elected to another four-year term has been very humbling, to say the very least. I am enthusiastic about the plans we have to continue to nurture and help guide the inevitable growth of this great city. According to American businessman James Penny, "Growth is never by mere chance, it is a result of forces working together." The successes we have had over the past few years would not have been possible with the collaborative efforts of our city administration, our council, our department heads working together, and I'd like to thank Daniel McDaniel, Rod Powell, Tim Terry, A.C. Brown, Lance Terry, and the newly-elected Ralph Maker. Mr. Maker replaced Dr. Lee Johnson, who was elected to our state representative, as state representative, and I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Johnson as he represents Greenwood at the state level. I would also like to acknowledge city attorney Mike Hammy, city clerk treasurer Charlotte Derry, and my invaluable executive assistants, Timmy Riley, who actually helps me handle all the day-to-day affairs of the city, AKA the mayor. Most importantly, I would like to thank my beautiful wife, who is not able to be here tonight. She's ill, but she is a kindergarten teacher at East Point Elementary School, and has loved, and, I think, and supported me for sure for the last forty, over forty years. I want her to know she is an inspiration to me, and all the children's lives that she has taught throughout the years, she's touched a lot of lives. I'm happy to report that the state of our city is strong, and our future is regional. Partnerships we have built and continue to develop with our fellow mayors, county and state officials, along with area organizations focused on economic development, will help our city grow. Working closely with the council, department heads, and our finance director, we have created a budget that balances the needs of our citizens with the values of our community. Over $3 million will go toward infrastructure improvements, with $750,000 in new parks capital, eighty-two percent of which is from grants. And our revenue, which has increased in 2018, is projected to grow by more than 4% in 2019. Mr. Tom Marsh, who has updated and precisely adjusted our whole physical environment, fiscal environment, has enhanced the finance department's customer service by making data and previously unavailable information accessible to the public. Tom has become a productive and entertaining sort of member of our team. Borrowing a phrase from my good friend Mayor McGill, who was gonna try to make it down tonight, "We are Greenwood proud and River Valley strong." I'm looking towards a regional future, we will focus on infrastructure, investments, and economic development solutions with the goal of growing, growing Greenwood in a responsible way. One of the reasons I'm Greenwood proud is we are ranked one of Arkansas's top five best cities to live in. A major factor in that ranking is the success of our police department under the direction of Chief Will Dawson. Last year, our city had the second lowest crime rate in the entire state. However, they are not complacent over there on the hill, and they are not taking these numbers for granted, but are constantly striving to find areas of improvement. Working with the police department, Greenwood School District now has three full-time resource officers. They were awarded a $50,000 grant from the school violence prevention program in order to increase school security. As a result of these and other efforts, Greenwood became the number-one safest school district in Arkansas. Recognizing the professionalism and leadership, several officers this past year went above and beyond the call of duty. Brad Hobbins received a mayor's choice award. Chief's choice went to Kristen Falkenberry. Caleb Williamson earned the reserve officer award. DWI detection went to Joseph Casanova. Joey Deere was top shot, stay out of his way. Ambassador Award went to Rebecca Martis, and Officer of the Year was Lee Cooper. I wanna thank all of them for their service to our community. Last year, one of the River Valley's heroes began her much-deserved retirement after being injured in the line of duty, and that was Canine Officer Kena. Thanks to a generous donation from Andrea Rockefeller, Kena is being replaced by a one-year-old shepherd from Slovakia, Mickey is her name, and Mickey has big paws to fill. One, our fire department also holds itself to a high standard of professionalism. They put in over 3,500 hours of training and responded to a recognized 723 incidents. Greenwood earned the distinction of being a fire-wise community for nine years straight now. Led by Chief Stewart Ryan, we maintain an ISO rating of three, which saves the citizens anywhere from $50 to $75 per household, or around $270,000 for the city as a whole. This year, the department was able to hire five new volunteer firefighters. Our firefighter of the year is Assistant Chief Roger Corbin, who has shown a long-term commitment to the department with more than 30 years of service. The department is upgrading their facilities and equipment, replacing the city's 1986 fire engine with a heavy-duty rescue pumper. Planning for our future, we have purchased the land and are in the design phase for Fire Station Number Three, which will help us prepare for westward growth. Obviously, you cannot talk about Greenwood without talking about our schools. Look what they turn out. We are proud of the accomplishment of our students, teachers, and our administration. Our schools have been recognized for their excellence in education across the state. Under the leadership of John Cecil, Greenwood Schools became the number-three best district in the state and third-best place to teach in Arkansas, with the number-one starting salary in the River Valley. These values are also reflected in individual achievements. For example, two of our students, Tyler Emmerin and Gable Stilly, both scored a perfect 36 on their ACTs, and Isaiah Blue, as you have heard earlier, was accepted to the U.S. Naval Academy. Major Lewis Clark and Senior Master Sergeant Charles Purnell were selected for the Air Force Junior ROTC Outstanding Instructors Board, and Angela Jones was awarded the Farm Bureau Arkansas Ag Class Teacher of the Year. Meeting Governor Hutchinson's goals in computer training and robotics, our schools are creating a skilled workforce that could help attract new businesses to the River Valley. When site selectors come to our region, they're not just looking for a place to build their company, but they're seeking places that indeed feel like home. Whether their employees can raise families, enjoy amenities, Greenwood Schools are a vital component to our region's economic development. The excellence of our teachers is carried over to our coaching staffs. Coach Ronnie Williams, retiring with over 1,000 wins in basketball. Coach Donnie Husband has over 600 baseball wins. And Coach Rick Jones, who you might have heard of, reached his 300th football win and received the National Power of Influence Award and Coach of the Year. This year, our teams won state championships in baseball, girls golf, volleyball, wrestling, and for the third straight year in football. Mayor McGill was to be here tonight, and I was gonna recognize the Northside Grizzlies for giving us our only one loss, but he's not here, so we'll just skip all that for a second. for giving us our only one loss, but it's not here, so we'll just skip over that real quick. Standard of excellence set by our school system is matched by the productivity and proactiveness of our city departments. Tim Posey, Greg Cross are our most senior directors, being old, with the combined service of almost fifty years. They keep our water supply safe and maintain seventy-two miles of water lines, fifty miles of sewer, and over one thousand manholes. They work with the James Fork Regional Water District, who has been an excellent partner. Last year, the department updated a thirty-year-old system, replacing the Main Street and Gary Street pump stations. Part of this year's budget includes around one-point-five million dollars in wastewater system improvements, which will bring services to residents who previously have not had them. We are planning for future growth by installing a waterline bypass and a vault on Westwood Drive. We cannot expand physically without investing in new infrastructure. Bumble. Get it? For example, the Tractor Supply, AT&amp;T, Dollar Tree, and Anytime Fitness will remain possible because we financed our future. We need to appreciate how these major investments will provide long-term investments, benefits. One area I am truly excited about is the way we have been able to improve our customer service for our citizens. For the first time, our water customers can make secure payments on the internet or through an automated phone system. And in order to keep people better informed, we will be establishing a twenty-four-seven alert system. Last year, we hired a new street director. I'm gonna go for it. Dennis Goodwin. And he is. Thank you. He's not been with the city long, but has shown great initiative, moving quickly from maintenance and equipment operator to being a lead foreman. Dennis is a versatile team leader, making him a successful recruiter. And because we were able to hire talent from within, our projects stayed on track and did not mislead. One major example is the Houston Street Overlay, which required lots of planning and coordination in order to finish that on time. Four years, the city and many of our citizens have seen an urgent, to say the least, need for sidewalks along Highway Tenspur for safety and convenience. This year, we are finally making walkability along Center Street a reality with the help of a three-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollar federal grant to build sidewalks on the north and south sides of that street. We are also working to make the streets by our schools bike-friendly and kids-safe with the addition of bike lanes and safety Chevrons around Westwood Elementary. The street department has acquired another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to overlay Denver Street and is coordinating with the county to improve wear road and its drainage issues out there on that side of town. Our street department staff provides our citizens with great customer service, working nights and weekends to solve a multitude of issues and problems. And I believe one person in particular, Valerie DiMaggio, who is in charge of our recycling center, deserves some special recognition tonight. She is dedicated to her job in the city. She has cleaned up, literally, the center and helps customers recycle correctly, which is a task and a half, and staying late whenever necessary. Thank you very much. One of the key components to growing Greenwood and looking towards a regional future is economic development, as we said. On the front line of those concerns are Sunny Bell and the planning commission. Their newest members are former Chamber of Commerce Director Tanya Taylor, who is now with the Department of Defense, and local business owner John Van Gorder. It's important to have business owners on this commission so they can help streamline those regulations to attract future companies. Last year, several new businesses made Greenwood their home, including The Dairy, Casey's General Store, Jangie Brown Construction, El Tequila Salsa, Miller's Repair, Stewart Drug, and the addition of downtown retail shops, House of Holland, Pure Your Flea, Live Out Loud, and The Cottage at Town Square Hair Salon. Existing businesses have also expanded, such as the Greenwood Collision, which, in my opinion, and Mr. Bell's opinion, is the best-looking auto repair shop in the River Valley. Great look when you first come into town. Along with our commercial growth, we have seen the construction and completion of the Sebastian County EMS Rescue Facility, which is obviously an asset to our community. In planning for the future, this commission has updated our comprehensive land use plan and ordinances, creating a new R-five zoning classification that allows for multifamily units. Several reports analyzing our city's needs have recommended that we expand our rental property available. These new regulations have already encouraged future growth. The Stone Creek Duplex Project, which will include retail spaces, is currently under construction. Another promising economic development sign is the approval of phases two and three for the Gold Creek subdivision, which is set dormant for years. Our goal is to continue looking at the big picture and our place in the River Valley region. Mr. Bob Purvis, Greenwood's new Chamber of Commerce Director, is working side-by-side with this administration to promote our city in order to attract new businesses and residents. With the assistance of the Advertising and Promotion Commission, the chamber is producing a full-color informational brochure. They have also instituted a series of legislative forms to allow citizens to hear from members of the Arkansas General Assembly about issues affecting the region. Near and dear to my heart, as all the departments are, the Parks Department makes a city feel like home, drawing in new families and visitors while improving the quality of life for all residents. They also contribute to economic development, beautifying our downtown and creating green spaces for new and existing businesses and residential developments. Our parks provide places for community recreation, such as disc golf, soccer, hiking, biking, fishing, and kayaking. They also offer entertainment, putting on citywide festivals and events, bringing in national acts. Our Fourth of July Freedom Fest has transformed into a vibrant draw. Our new director, Nathan Neighbors, is developing a five-year capital improvement plan, which includes a splash pad project in Bill Park that designs for an east-side connector that would make it possible to walk or bike from Greenwood Lake all the way to Walmart. One of the goals is to complete a seven-mile certified mountain bike course that would attract biking and running competitions to the River Valley. Groups of volunteers and boy scouts have been working on these other projects around the city. Another area of action is the Ed Wilkinson Community Pavilion, that has become one of the premier wedding destinations for our region. The pavilion also brings in corporate events and retreats from across the state. To better serve our citizens, the Parks Department is planning to update their reservation system, increase wayfinding with signage, and are developing a twenty-four-seven customer service portal. Additionally, the city contributes to the Betty Wilkinson Senior Activities Center, area agency on aging, and the Boys and Girls Club, addressing the needs of all of our residents, no matter what their age. These quality-of-life amenities are important factors in attracting companies and corporations not only to Greenwood, but also to the River Valley. Thanks to organizations like Focus on Greenwood and Bulldog Breakfast Club, Greenwood continues to be a town that indeed takes care of its neighbors. Breakfast Club collects cereal and milk for students in need, and Focus on Greenwood provides scholarships to students along with financial assistance to families and individuals. I would encourage you to become a part of that group if you're not familiar with it. It's a very special group in Greenwood. Service organizations and volunteers are a major component of our community. Amongst them are three unsung heroes. A group of ladies in their seventies have taken upon themselves to keep certain sections of the trail near Zachary Park clean and clear of low-hanging limbs and brush. Between the three of them, they have logged in over five hundred service hours, and we only know this because Nathan went to them and insisted that they keep those hours for us. We thank all the volunteers who quietly help our city, and giving them your time is certainly not gonna notice. I would also like to recognize those who are bringing their visions of Greenwood's future to life. Sean Lynn, a successful local business and a restaurant owner, continues to reinvest in our town. If he doesn't stop, it's gonna become Lindwood, and I warn you about that. He has started working on a duplex housing and retail development that will help expand our city eastward. On the west side, Jacob Burton is developing the property on the corner of Highway Seventy-One and Tenspur. I truly, truly believe these projects will not only benefit our city and citizens, but will lead the way to future growth. Finally, I cannot talk about inspiring individuals without mentioning our Citizen of the Year, Michael Lejeune. Governor Hutchinson appointed him to the State Board of Architects, and he is a John G. Williams Fellow at the University of Arkansas School of Architecture and Design. You can see his work around the River Valley and our town, the police department, Ed Wilkinson Community Pavilion, freshman center, the Old Rock Gym, Memorial Park in the Square, just to mention a few. Michael is the chairman of our Economic Development Committee, and he continues to seek ways to realize our city and the region's potential. Michael's here, so... It's no reason he's here. Other citizens have also been recognized at the state level. Our fire chief, Barry Young Fire Chief, Sheriff Ryan, was appointed by Governor Hutchinson to the Fire Protection Service Board. Greg Cross is the president of the Arkansas Global Water Association. Our entertaining Tom Marsh, a certified fraud examiner, is a governor-appointed position on the Arkansas Commission of Law Enforcement Standards Training. Charlotte Derry is on the Municipal League Workers' Comp Trust and Firefighters Income Protection Plan Board. And Councilman Tim Terry won the High School Division of the Clio Award, Play of the Year. Call it, people. These people are just simply a few examples of how our citizens make Greenwood successful and carry a town we have all grown to love. One of my primary goals is to become a better mayor and to help Greenwood grow. An important aspect of that is maintaining and forming regional bonds. As I have done with our council, I plan to strengthen relationships with fellow mayors from our neighbors in Fort Smith, Mayor McGill, and Mayor Hurst of Van Duren, all the way to Mulberry's Mayor Baxter, as well as other surrounding mayors, in order to improve the River Valley as a whole. Another important partner is the Chatty Crossing redevelopment project. I have certainly enjoyed working with Lori Robertson and Ivy Owen, and I would like to personally thank Mr. Owen for his hard-working commitment. Equipping myself and our city with the tools to flourish, I am chairing Municipal League and Western Arkansas Planning and Development District Committees. I'm a member of the Fort Smith Regional Alliance and Western Arkansas Workforce Board Development Board. My objective is to learn how Greenwood can better contribute to the region's economic development and to find ways to control our commercial corridor with plans for northern growth along Highway Seventy-One. It's gotta happen. Finally, again, I am coordinating with state and county officials to address the issues of traffic congestion and safety. Since I was first arrived in office almost five years ago, I have been developing viable plans with the State's Department of Transportation. I am very happy to report that with the completion of the department's traffic study, we are on a path towards the construction of a traffic relief portal. This corridor will connect Highway Ninety-Six to the intersection of Coker and Highway Ten, creating a new four-lane route for trucks, reducing downtown traffic and increasing emergency services, more importantly than anything I believe, to the east side of town. The initial estimated cost of this project is twenty-six million dollars. I am negotiating with the state to limit our share of those costs and am seeking out the possibility of some federal funding. Having the privilege of being mayor of the town I have lived in my entire life, I am passionate about the potential the future holds for Greenwood. I understand the importance of keeping our small-town feel as we approach a crucial turning point in the development of our economic and visitor growth. The reason I believe these ambitious ideas and dreams are possible are because of our people. Our citizens are why Greenwood's proud, and we are all River Valley strong. And God bless you, our city, and the United States of America. And off the record, I'd like to thank Dr. Brandon Gilzman for assisting me with the speech. Off the record. Okay, so, one. Lance Warrior was close, he was pretty black. Oh, the speechwriter was late. Nice. Nice. How do you do results? In case anybody, that's funny. You guys are good. Thank you so much for being here tonight for that. We are moving on to business. Right now, one of the council members for AP Commission.
The AP Commission met last month, and I can see in light of Lee Johnson's resignation. I explained to him that this position would be one of the governing body's appointments, and that two from the governing body serve at the pleasure of the governing body. The commission spoke about it for a while, I suggested to everybody, and they discussed a little bit about the ability to make a form. We do have trouble with form in AP because of the meeting time, four o'clock, and it's because we accommodate those that are in the restaurant business. They talked about it for a moment, and I, there again, I did explain these two positions, I'm one of them, serve at the pleasure of the governing body, that they decided that they would like to put forward to be considered AC Brown for the position. Since then, I have talked to several of you in just the past, and Lance has said that he would also be interested in that, four o'clock would not be a problem with him. Before the meeting, I asked him, I want to talk to Daniel and ask him in light of him changing careers, four would be a problem again, and he said, no. They did speak about basically being close, and you could just about drag him over here for any form, so... With that, I'll leave it to you all. Did I miss anything?
You were gonna nominate one for us, but...
Well, I believe in the committees and the commissions, and I always represent the power. The department says this is what we want to do, even though I disagree or agree or whatever, that's the way I always am backed. The commission thought the best choice to be AC Brown, so I might...
I agree. I'll say.
AC, you wanna do it?
Oh, yes.
AC, you gonna do it?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's a yes.
Mr. Brown.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I know lately that Lance has been very involved in that, you know, making that... I think that he would make a fine addition to it, too. I don't know how, if he would want that.
All right, I have your point here.
Probably under my circumstances right now, that I have pulled me on, maybe it would probably be better for me to withdraw, if you decide. I'm having, like, trips, so I don't want anybody to...
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, I'm standing.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And for the benefit of Ralph, since he's new, I've explained that the positions in the AP Commission exist by state statute, which we have adopted. And so there's two from the governing body, one at large, and four from the tax entities in lodging and food. And the, you know, the part of the harvest are the four from the food industry because we don't have any lodging. So we do struggle with form in AP, but that's the seven. Is that right, sir?
Yes.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Congratulations for your condolences. Hang on.
Don't be late.
Don't be late. We know where you live and where you work. Close. Next on the agenda is number four, is a resolution to declare the bridge memorial dedication.
Mayor Hassel, Chris Derry. I've got three resolutions that were on the agenda tonight.
I've got one right in front of you, son.
What? This is how you do it.
Oh, that's what I get for this.
Sorry. You're up next.
Don't go far.
Don't go far. Don't go far. You had in your pocket a resolution, and this is obviously another very, very touching and meaningful moment, I think, I don't think, I know. So, the council has had time to look at the resolution, I think, possibly. I know the family, the Estes family, I did write, didn't I?
Yes, my brothers.
Yes, sorry. It's visit with staffers and Dr. Lee Johnson regarding this, and they proceeded to pass a resolution in his house, I believe, on this. And so basically, and I will read some of this, I guess, and I want some family to be able to address it if you like. In the meantime, I'm going to pass this picture now. This is Staff Sergeant Justin Dutch Estes, and so I'll just read a little bit of it. Whereas Mr. Justin M. Estes, Staff Sergeant in the United States Army, was plus, I don't know if you can say that correctly, plus in the sleeve, awarded the Silver Medal, Star Medal for gallantry in action while serving with Company C, 2D Battalion, 505th Parachute Industry Regiment, 3rd Brigade Combat Team, 82nd Airborne Division, on March 5, 2007, while on combat patrol operations during operations Iraq and Free. And whereas Staff Sergeant Estes distinguished himself by conspicuous gallantry and trepidity and then trouble speaking, at the risk of his life above and beyond the call of duty while serving as a squad leader during a complex improvised explosive device attack in the city of Samara, I think, Iraq, and was killed in action, and was moving casualties out of the flames and wreckage. And whereas in the ultimate act of bravery and selfless service to his comrades, which he gave his own life, Staff Sergeant Estes attempted to save the lives of five of his comrades, and by his undaunted courage and treacherous lightning spirit and unwavering devotion to duty, Staff Sergeant Estes gallantly gave his life for his country, holding the highest traditions of military heroism, and reflecting distinct credit upon himself, Task Force Two Panther, Task Force Lightning in the United States Army. And to, and whereas to honor Staff Sergeant Estes' gallantry in action against an enemy of the United States, it's appropriate for the bridge east of Marina City Hall, that just as Sebastian County Goldman's Memorial, Arkansas Highway 10, be named as Staff Sergeant Justin Dutch Estes Memorial Bridge. And whereas Arnold Sabres, another Lee Johnson, is sponsored bill number eight, House HR 1019, to be considered by the House of Representatives of the 92nd General Assembly of the State of Arkansas, requesting that the above-named bridge east of the city hall be signed as memorial of the National Honorer, Staff Sergeant Justin Dutch Estes. And this has been approved through the highway department, they're a part of this organization, I believe, or not organization, but they're well aware and approve of this project.
I called Lee Johnson before the meeting, he told me there's an initiative of the mothers of these KIs. Is that true, that this is happening all over the state?
It's an organization called Bridges for the Fallen.
Yes.
That is trying to honor all of the fallen military in the various cities where the families live.
Eric, so, I should assume the students, some of the two, to hit the ball roll.
They said there's a point person in the state, the state has a specific plaque that they do, that they're working on, and, you know, but, and they're doing it on some of the bridges throughout the state, it's inside of the miscoude, they need a resolution for the miscoude. So, boy, you know, when I was in the army, you know, you'd come across these guys that were from the 101st Airborne and 82nd Airborne, and your brother was an 82nd Airborne soldier. I mean, they were the toughest of the tough. How many have motion?
Second. Second. Your first question.
The second.
Mr. Warren.
Is it something that we can improve ahead of the state? I know that there's some kind of pity of their state roads and what we can do on them and everything, you know, there's bridges or waterways.
To my understanding, the process is, this would have to be approved by us in order to, for them to continue with that process. Does that sound right?
Yeah, because the bridges within the city limits get approved by the state before the state.
When I spoke to him, they've got a point person at the state, that they've developed all this, and everything's set, you know, the size of the flags, everything is already done. And it's something they're doing all over the state, at least recognizing these boys that are kind of KIA or soldiers. Do I get your folks living in Greenwood now?
Yeah.
Have a motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Powell? Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Liz Terry?
Yes.
Jerry, Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, and we will get a copy of this resolution to you once it's signed and stamped and sealed and all that good stuff, so, just be in touch with you. Tammy will be in touch with you, and we'll make sure everything happens that way. Thank you for allowing this to happen in our city, and by the way, to people that don't know, we described this bridge literally right here, out on the other side of Parkmont here. So, I'm not sure what the timeframe is for the state to move on it, the plaque, and they will come back, and I hope Representative Johnson will be back to during a, I believe, a cutting or something, dedication of that plaque on the bridge, so.
I also spoke to the BFW, our local chapter here, and they said, whatever happens at the dedication, they want to be involved. So, if y'all will relay that to them or one of us, the mayor, he'll make sure that that happens.
I'll be in touch with you.
Okay.
My mom, myself.
Okay.
Well, she's a congressman, is in touch with my mom, but I tend to give him out.
Well, they just really expressed their ass and effort. They said, you know, when this happens, we want to be there, so.
Appropriate or not, I'll take my picture night with you and your son's picture, if that's okay, I'm just keeping, Tammy, would you mind? Oh, absolutely. Come on. Sure. Are you football, man? Who's that guy?
Oh, Justin.
Oh, Justin, that's right, that's right. Do you want to hold his picture? Okay, that's perfect. That's better. You see? There you go.
There we go.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Derry, Council, I've got three resolutions that were on the agenda tonight, but Mike informed me that there's some changes that need to be made on those, so we would like to table those until next month. These are buildings and in the city that we want to start a process on as far as condemning them and installation in certain cases. One of the buildings is the old title Happy Home Square. Another one is a home out on South Coker that's been there for years, that's been in a bad state. And the third one is a unauthorized carport over on West End, but Mike can make some changes on that, and I'll bring it back in front of you next month, if that's okay.
That's on all three?
Yes.
You think, council? I want to say, well, here, if there's Sunny, I put the task on Sunny a month or so ago, I guess, or last time, I'm not sure when, we separated, or I separated the animal control officer and the code enforcement officer, and put our code enforcement part on Sunny's shoulders, and he has taken that and run with it almost to the scary point. He's doing a great job, and he's doing exactly what I needed, or what we needed him to do as a city, to go out and move his issues and try to clean up literally some areas in town. I say this a lot, and I go to McKinney, Texas every two weeks, and I drive through some little towns in Oklahoma, and it's bad what can happen to a city if you don't take care of these things. We want to help people as much as we can when there's an issue, and Sunny's aware of that, so as we go further into this cleanup, if you will, and making sure that our citizens abide by these ordinances, I'm going to offer, with council's blessing, I think, or maybe without, that the city be able, if we run across a situation of someone that literally has no fun, cannot have the means to clean something up, and they want it cleaned up, I'm going to suggest that we utilize our capabilities to kind of help with that. That's not to say we're going to get in the cleanup business, but I think it's important that we can go and address all these homes and places in business that we should be prepared to do something like that, and they'll come down on the street department, I'm sure, and they'll, all things do, but.
Well, I started this, there's one of the people that I sent a letter to, pressing the need that they need to clean up their yard and remove trash and some other things. I had listed on there, and about a week later, I got a letter, and I thought, oh, here we go. I got a letter from them, a certified letter from them, and I thought, here we go. I opened it up, and they were thanking me for bringing it to their attention and apologized for letting it get into that condition.
I almost ran like a dog.
We were sure. That's in the files now. Along with other letters, but that's the first one, so.
Anyhow, thank you, I'll bring it back to you.
I'm sorry. Table, all three, need a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, table.
Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Terry?
We may break all kinds of records tonight.
That's true.
That is the last actual item on the agenda, but it's time for the department reports and questions. Several are out, though I know two of Ryan's out, ill, I think he got ill when he heard I was reading the speech. And I think Tim and Greg left, but we still have Percy and Sunny and Street. You have all those written reports, so, but if you have a question, there they are.
Well, I have a question for the fire chief, but Councilman Lance Terry answered the foreword, was a bullet point about the new engine was under construction, that I know a little bit of small engine business over there. Lance informed me, show us a picture, that the new truck, is a fiery engine.
Right. You're actually building it as we speak.
Yes, it's being built in the process.
You don't want Stewart working on the small engine.
I kind of knew what he meant, but I sure wanted to put Stewart a little off, see who's the chief, brother.
He's willing to show you those pictures, and be very proud of that being built in the speech, so. And it is being paid for, and we speak also, it is paid, probably not the cap system and things like that yet. Oh, that's what I know. Good deal. Anything else from any department, any council?
Just had a council order.
From the council.
Oh, yes.
Tom, I still don't understand the jump in the city sales use tax, and then county stays.
County, wait. County, 4.5%. We live in the county right now, month of February, it was 5.1% in January over the previous year, and it was 3.2% over in February, and right now, for the year, we're 4.1% higher in county. City is 2.2% higher for the first two months of the year.
Certainly is a good trend. It certainly is a good, I guess it's not enough there to be a trend, but.
Now, in March, if you look at the graph, you'll notice there's usually a negative dive, because March is reflecting February, which is, so, we're looking at that number drop, I don't know where it dropped, but it is going to go down. It does peak back up over the summer months.
That's right.
It's a trend. What's encouraging is the county, well, in rate, so, kind of happy about that.
Well, even if March is drop, if it's still higher, like this trend, it could be, you know, it could be a red shade.
We keep, in the county size, we keep above 1.5%, it's a range for, 3% on the city, so we're still a little down on the city side, but I do look at some later.
Anything else for the department? Councilwoman Orville?
I was wondering, Eric, if you heard anything back from Municipal League on, you know, the big increase per capita.
Oh, I didn't tell you, we didn't tell you. I'm all in the back of the church. We, I bugged him enough, I guess, and obviously it was a mistake. We, you have the numbers?
I do.
If you'd like, I just point at you. We're not paying that.
No, we paid, it was 31,000 or 33,000, I think is what it was initially, and we kind of let it go. When you got the revised bill back, they put it back to two per capita, $2 per capita, and we ended up paying about 19,000 for, and the check cleared on their end. So, he must have crossed in the mail, I don't think.
I got another bill for the same large amount, and I already cleared it with Municipal League and assured, but I found in the literal conversation that that was going to come down, and obviously the law, so, we do good.
Now, we budgeted a higher amount, so that's okay, we, no, I think that's it, Mr.
Oh, there you go.
They're already spending it.
So, we were held at the same rate, $2.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, after the census, we expect.
I believe. Will, you believe?
Yes. But at least we're going to get the same thing, all the additional people there are reversals to this state, get our fair share from the county sales tax.
And by the way, on that census, this is, I may be a little off here, or may I am a little off, but since the Bureau has been there twice, and I've been there a couple of months, I'm sure, a few months ago, and it's, did I understand, I'm just sounding silly, but they basically said if they're in Greenwood during the time of the census, we're going to count them, more or less.
Now, you have to be in Greenwood.
Well, or the zip code, yeah, so, all everybody knows.
No, the county, yes, so, people that have no residence, if you, whoever counts them, that's who they get counted with, so.
So, that was an interesting point, but truly, as this thing comes up soon, we need to get the word out that this is, this is big, this is a big thing, and we believe, we believe that we're going to bump over 10,000, and so the more we get, the more money we get and that sort of thing. So, it's going to be a big bill, and please, everybody, don't just treat it like, I honestly had it probably one time in my life or two that doesn't really matter. Well, it does matter, it matters a lot, that we get folks counting, so, we'll be talking about it more, and hopefully through groups of volunteers and that sort of thing to help it back, so.
Aren't there a number of things that happen, not all good, where we go over 10,000?
There is a couple, but it's not as good as the others, yeah, yeah, so, hopefully that, hopefully the good will outweigh that, because there are some things that you get to face, if you will.
Municipally, maybe a bad one.
Maybe, could be.
So, for sure, but either way, with this census, it is a big one, you can go 10,000, never that, don't feel like.
So, says Councilman Tim Terry. All right. Anything else from council?
I've asked before, remember anything we can do about these basketball rules?
I don't know that if it's not already in some, I failed to find it specifically. I would think, he's talking about portable guns.
Hang out on the street, I kind of thought you was that, Mr.
We should have a lot of NBA stars soon, something.
Not really, they're blowing up on the road, and they're playing the college.
Well, they're an issue for street department guys, workers, there are issues with our departments, obviously.
Well, whilst today, that's what was happening, I think, we got some of them sticking out some of the way.
Well, I think that sounds like a Sunny Bell issue.
I mean, I'm just curious, that's just one subdivision, and that kind of, that kind of, pardon me.
I think that's a fair, you know, I didn't think much about it, I drove around too, and I don't know how many I can, but it is an issue, and people, I think innocently, don't think about it, they just want their kids out in the street, et cetera, et cetera. They want their kids to be playing basketball, so, you know, it doesn't take a lot to put it up on the curb.
Well, ninety percent have talked to the driveways, I mean, you turn sideways where the grid and driveway is, it's plain to see.
I don't think there's anything on the books right now, I mean, we could do it, and, you know, enforcing it would be another thing, and, but if that's what council wants, we can move that away.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like having a parked car, when it's broken. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like having a parked car and it's broken and almost, if you will, almost on the curb.
Well, some of them are pretty trashy. I mean, they, the wind will blow them over and just spin up, they leave a white end.
But, you know, you have the same problem if there was a car parked in a cul-de-sac, you know, that they'd have to get around that and all that.
Do you think there's something, are you on the books?
I think when someone read it in the address.
It seems like there will be some discussion, I mean, you can't redo anything to create an obstruction in the street.
You know, like I said, that's probably a trashy issue that you could go on there. Couldn't create enough structure, but it would be, I don't know, different between that and a parked car.
We'll look at.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we'll look to see what's on the books already and if not anything that can.
There's a difference putting out there in the evening and the morning, they're pulling it back in the, you know.
I agree.
Leaving it out there.
Yeah, I agree, Lance, you know, some of them, I've been playing on.
Yeah, that's the fifth one I counted down one street. I'm like, so I, I just made a point, the girl.
I know, so that's been in, you know, yard for eight years.
There are a couple, we're laying out on the curb in college sex and just getting done with it over there towards the state. I mean, pretty rough. No intentions to pick us up, but.
I wonder if it's not for the trash or something.
I don't know.
You'd be in that business.
We'll look to see what's on the books.
Well, they don't have plenty to do and that's kind of piddly, but.
Well, I don't have a problem with it because I'm sure I'd see kids getting better basketball, but I would like to see them moving it out, looking it out there because obviously the road's bigger, there's a lot more room than the right.
Well, one of them, they're portable, I don't mean, one's not wearing that wheel on the back until.
Yes, the one actually is concrete.
Oh, nice.
It's concrete and, you know.
Next to the curb.
Yeah, eventually took the bottom of the concrete and made.
Well, I can only play on those ones that's about 16.
So, I have no intentions of moving it, just FYI.
It should be like subdivision developers putting in an organized area.
Well, there should be a required that that kind of.
A requirement.
But it, I mean, that sort of stops, it's not as stated that, you know, basketball four assets is put in.
Where are park, where are these?
Uh, these guys, no. It wasn't in subdivision regulations back then. It is now, they're supposed to put in a park that's over.
Well, the people park, where, is it about the cemetery?
Yeah, and that, the city put that in, we bought it.
The rooms are basketball for?
There is room for basketball.
You're talking about that one where it wrote?
Yep, there is. I'm renting 30 of them.
You don't want to haul over.
Follow, follow.
We'll check into it and see what we can do. Anything else from council?
Yes, I talked with Penny on a couple occasions, you know, as far as kind of the trash pickup around the square and she's been going to get it removed, but I was just wondering exactly, I don't know if it was the holidays or if it was, you know, just like they did this, but there was, you know, quite a few days that trash was just sitting out there.
Cans, like the permanent, in concrete cans.
They're supposed to pick up parts, that's part of the parks and they, they're supposed to pick it up and, you know, if you sit out there, call me or call out with us and tell them that they forgot to pick it up.
We don't mind calling.
But we also have businesses that are putting their, their trash out by the dumpsters that it's not supposed to happen, that's making it overflow. I saw some down on the end, Mr. Skinner's office of the women, which was a camera box, this whole trash. I started to call out this on Saturday, but I thought, I didn't call, I've not called them, but wasn't they going to answer or not, I don't know, but I figured you'd remind them again that they didn't. I don't know what days they normally pick that up.
Nathan, do you know what that's set up?
Mondays.
Monday.
On the square.
I worked with a gentleman, this is Westwood, he had pictures, he couldn't, didn't have videos, he was driving, he did get a picture of Alvis truck hitting the fork smith and the back compactor having to compact it and stuff just flying out of the way, just fork smith all the way down Spur and then on the 71.
Well, on that note, I will inform you gentlemen of a visit I got to my office and I needed to ask you, and I can't necessarily do it without bringing a meeting most of the time around.
Sure.
So, I will just let you know, and I think I know the answer, but I'll let you tell me, the gentleman came in to ask for another meeting, whether it be a study session or come to council meeting to request a, pay a rate increase on the city from Alvis. I can give, in my opinion, well, I need your opinion on that.
You got the contract?
Correct. Do you want to even have a discussion in it or you just want to stick to the last thing? That's, that's what I.
Unless it's terminated and they've been proven.
We can do it, we never, I just want to make sure, I didn't want to be the result of your decision on that contract. We still have the contract to move it along until we know, and that's another year, I believe it's 20, 20, I think, somewhere.
I would even propose that if we're continuing to have the same problems with Alvis that we have had, the same complaints, but we've had, we got termination rights in that contract and if we terminated, we did.
I think that's something that.
Now, we may pay a higher rate.
We will.
But I think we're getting what we paid for.
We will definitely pay a higher rate. We, we, the city, the council and of course with Thomas Hill, we've been looked into the idea of doing that on our own. We have determined absolutely that we could not, we, the city could not do it for what Alvis does for, for sure. I mean, it's just, it's not possible. And I talked to, you know, official bid or any handles or quote from anybody else, but there was another gentleman or another company that suggested, or obviously wanted to know that, and he knows our situation and he didn't give any price, he just said it would be higher, obviously. I don't, I truly don't know, I agree with what you just said, get what you paid for and not sure how they're going it or what they're going it anyway. So, but at any time, the council, that's the desire of council, to get together and talk about that and have a discussion, and I would certainly have Mr. Henry look at that contract again, and you're right, it basically says for any, any.
Is that 30 days?
It's 30 days. Either, either party can terminate that contract, so. So, whenever you're ready to do that.
I might pay more money to have my trash dumped because I've dumped my trash. I've done plenty of times of picking trash dumps up and still got trash in it.
I mean, the whole discussion that came up about divin' ourselves, creating our own.
Where?
Yeah, I mean, part of it was, you know, financially, does it even make sense? But of what spawned a lot of the conversation was just the poor service that we're getting, the poor equipment that's running around on the streets, like Tim says, we're dumping stuff on the street, we're leaking stuff on the street, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If that's continuing, they're violating our terms of our contracts anyway, because the terms of the contract that we must reestablish were that you don't do that. You know, you've got to have some things in operable condition. I wouldn't have a problem with executing our 30-day op clause and saying, we're rebidning this April 1st or whatever.
We, I will say this, we continue to do, we continue to get some calls. I don't know that we're getting as many as we did in the summer. Of course, summer, you're going to get more because it's takes, you know, it's noticeable, so those calls are going down some, so I just want to say that we don't hurt that, we still get some.
I just don't feel like, I mean, I'm not trying to be impactful about this, but I don't feel like they responded to us really in any way. I mean, we, all the discussions that we had, the contract that we went through, the threats that we made to some degree, got no reaction, you know? And if you continue to keep paying them, then they're going to continue to do what they do, what incentive they have to fix it. And I think we've got other companies willing to provide a better quality of service.
We get, we get.
I had a gentleman come in, did it last week?
A gentleman from another company that had not been before, we were, I was aware that he came in suggesting. I actually did, I think that's, that's, anyway.
I took out the calls for the price, but. Well, I haven't made no, I haven't used, you know, we, we have contracts, I mean, you know, another increase. I didn't want.
I just have a problem with it from just the principle of paying for service that we're not getting or the poor insufficient service that we just allow to go on.
So, you want to make, are you making any motion to do, to do that with, with the city attorneys checking on it, making sure that we're good?
We are good. Yeah, I would make a motion and we execute our right to terminate the contract and put it back up for bid. They not going to bid.
How many days?
How many days would we give it?
You have to give a 30-day notice.
You need a 30-day notice that, so you're going to have to.
I mean, this.
You don't want to be without.
Yeah, the thing is, if you blink now, trash, you pick that.
I would say that we would rebid it with an effective date for the new contract of May 1st.
I was assured and don't hold me to this, and I think this would be true, and I know it, I had a gentleman from another company tell me, he knew of that, he's seen our contract, he knows of that clause, he guaranteed me, and that's not to say he would win the contract, but he guaranteed that his company could be here the next day. Well, Tom, how would that, you know, if we had a 20% increase or something like that, how would that impact our budget?
Wouldn't pass.
It hasn't gone without, Devin, but you got.
Cities pay that.
It's not a great relation here or anything, but it's not relation. I'm kidding about that. We have to do, we, the citizens deserve the best service that we can provide for them. I mean, that's the whole point. I know Barling, I believe, without being quoted, Mr. Simpson, say. I believe Barling recently raised their rates.
17.
To $17. Were it $9, something.
10, 40, which we recycle, that's a dollar recycle. We budgeted, we did an estimation of what it would cost us right at 13 with some used capital that we would be buying used trucks, but, you know, that's, that's probably low in terms of, we could probably do a good.
Obviously, our.
For about 1450, so.
Do you think that's what the city can do it for? If you have concrete numbers, we can't make a lot of that as a city because our new world traffic.
We're not going to make money on the residential side.
It's commercial.
Problem is, commercials locked in with contracts, so you're not going to force them. If you do, you're going to be dealing with that as that issue.
And we're told that by other companies too, you know, I don't know.
If you're a consultant, that.
You're a consultant, you're absolutely.
You're not going to make money on the residential, you got to get the commercial. My buddy, I mean, that I talked to, said, if you're going in the trash business as a city, you have to go all in, day one, run everybody out, because you can't make money in the residential, you have to get the commercial. Well, all these people have contracts.
Exactly because of what the fees cost to dump, I guess.
If these continue to go, the gentleman that visited me a couple weeks ago was telling me that these went again, that's unfortunate, and I believe that's true. I haven't seen the number, but I believe that's correct.
I just, I just, I do, do they make money out there, I promise you.
Well, sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I just do fast factory work on that, but I keep getting good numbers, so I just, I was going to be talking to Tom all day.
Well, yeah, I think.
I do these numbers every time you can.
And?
You can make money, but you're going to be making money on the citizens. Barling's, Barling's numbers came in at about 16, 16 or $10 and their city council just said, X rounded up to 17. Well, they're going to make that profit on that, but that's just going into capital because they're going to tuck that away to replace trucks and other things if they were in the business or to cover other incidentals that probably wasn't budgeted for. You can do the same thing, but you remember, that's all past.
Tom, do you remember this, I mean, you know, I think, is that their own company or is that hired out as a?
I think, I think you know whether that's their own company.
It's their company.
They have their own trucks, Barling does, so.
I've said it time and time, I mean, I for one, don't mind paying for something, I'm giving a good job. It's just, I go back to the recycle thing with the cream that everybody's going, we put that $15 in, but nobody, we didn't, you know what I'm saying, there wasn't a whole lot of choice there. We all pay that, so I mean, what's another $15 on the, on the trash that would be a good service? And I don't have to have to run some of your yard and trash on the driveway and, you know.
I agree.
Down the road.
We always have to be, and I know you are conscious of those that can't afford much more than they pay, and I know you are, I don't have to say that, but that's obviously something that we have to consider, I think council has to know and consider, and you do, so sometimes a $15 or more for somebody is a lot.
We didn't consider it with that as a recycle.
Well, that's true, that's, that was his point, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, too.
If you're in the, in the mood for giving away and rebidding for the Alvis versus another company coming in, and then you're also considering us doing trash and maybe establishing a sanitation department of sorts, it'd probably be better if you get a one-year contract for service and let it gear up to be able to be ready to go whenever the contract stops because it's going to take going out of any trucks, it's going to take staffing department, it's going to take, we're going to have to gear up to it. It's not like we can just, next day, we're ready.
Well, our contract is a one-year without overdue, right?
It's a three-year.
Three-year without overdue.
I thought.
Is it three?
It's three.
Three.
I went for one, y'all talking.
I'm not sure.
I don't think it has a lot of. We're going to do it beforehand, I mean, with the same company, we have to do it before we're up to the top.
Well, I mean, I guess I would just want to consider where we would house the vehicles, I mean, you know, you know, would we house them over here or around the road?
That's why we like at least a period of time where we can work on that app. If we're really serious about establishing that club, and if after the six months to nine months, we're not ready and we don't want to do it and we see it's not viable for us, then we, at the end of that year, can we re-up the company or put it out for bid?
I suddenly start pursuing that because I go back and said it a thousand times, we're going to run the trash business, we control it. We'll throw that work and I'll, I mean, you put this up, it's all none of yours.
And who, I don't know if we necessarily would be out there to make money per se, just enough to keep the truck maintenance, pay the wages and the dump fee, you know, I mean, these guys in the business try to make money as they're quite a wide suburban and what have you, and pay their Christmas bonus to employees. As my vision, and I may be way off, it means the city taking this on just in almost like a nonprofit deal where everything that comes in from the citizens will ride back into the sanitation department, whether it's wages for the superintendent, obviously for the drivers and such, and just making some of the trucks. I, we're not in, I don't look for making half a billion dollars off the trash service, I wouldn't want to charge for people more than, I mean, just almost barely making money, I guess, would be.
Maintain the service.
Right, that was, that was kind of where I was thinking the whole time when I was wanting the city to try to take this on. If we could do that, I'd be on for it. I'm not convinced. Even if it's $13, if it goes to $13 a house or whatever. My concern is always that we start like everything we do, we got a recycling dumpster, now we got a recycling center, and now we charging everybody for it, or whatever we do. I mean, we want to do is collect trucks and diamond plate dog boxes, because we got dog catcher, you know? If we go down that path, then three years from now, we're going to look up and we've got another budget in this, a departmental budget, the director of it with all the stuff, all the stuff that goes with.
More directly by the service provided to the customer, which is your citizens.
Yes.
And as you grow the city, your service gets, your amount of revenue generates higher because of the number of people that are being processed.
And I mean, I just.
And I mean, I just, I'm making it hit those commercial contracts as they fall off of whatever business or system.
Exactly.
I mean, I know a lot of cities do their own, so it, I guess it can be done. I don't know what their numbers look like, but.
We don't know if you try.
Your consultant that was here too, covered, talked a little bit about what you're talking about. And is the, and I'm not saying he was preaching buy all new trucks, but he certainly had something to say about used trucks. I mean, there are times where that makes sense and they're equipped, they're completely redone, but, you know, using by a used truck only saves money may not be, or I guess what you were talking about too.
Well, why were there five new stuff?
Yeah.
Because hydraulic leaks is one of the business issues, right?
I spent enough years in the trucking business to tell you, they're gonna break down. When trucks break down and you do some mechanics, and we will have these mechanics and that. If your truck breaks down, now you're not picking the trash up and then you're really getting yelled at.
You know, we got, we got your truck in mind.
Yeah, I mean, if, but if we can figure out that it works, but I think Tom's point is well made. We, we need to spend some time fully understanding what that means. I'm not convinced that it's certainly not our core competency, so, uh, I would rather pay a fair rate to get good service from people who that is their core competency and we go work on what we do. If we can study that, flesh that out, fully understand what all that means, and we're not gonna be building a new $300,000 garage somewhere to park all the trash trucks in next year. You know, that's what worries me. That gets in terms of the big deal. You gotta have a place to put all those trucks. We, we were talking last month, we don't have a place to store all the stuff that we have now. All of our drives are full.
The horse out, the horse in.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess we have cars somewhere. But, I mean, my point is, I would like to go, execute our rights and manage already this contract. You gotta think through the time of that time. Sign on for the service, whether that's May first, June first, whatever. Do nothing is not gonna change.
Well, I mean, in just the, the second year of the contract, I mean, we've just completed the second year now for this really. I mean, we've been looking at it.
I can go get it.
She don't get it. I think we got one before we can grab it or quick and we can grab it pretty often.
You just finished the first year.
Yeah, I think we're just starting two, not two.
Yeah, I guess it came to us, yeah, a year ago saying that fees is going up. Well, yeah, that's correct. As soon as the contract was signed, it was less than six months, maybe three months, that they came back and said, these have gone up. Here we go. So, and then, and then now again, and supposedly there's been another great hike at the, at the landfill. Which I, just for your knowledge, I just kind of look across the table at my desk and typically and say, sorry, that's the cost of new business. That's, that's why we have contract. The rate increased, I mean, and other cities have, I believe, there've been cities that accepted that with them and went on. I think there were a few that denied it.
So, James, four months after I would put that on the citizens?
Do I? I always. Yeah, that's what it goes to. Thank you very much. When you began this contract in 2017? September. So, right, and it's three years. Mike, you're better putting it to make the track.
That's what I recall.
I thought we left the auto deal.
But is that three? Three. Okay, so September 20, right? So, I have a motion to.
Execute, terminate the contract, and we did an effective date.
Do you need the list of reasons for the execution of?
No, it says, uh, may be terminated by either party at any time or without cause upon 30 days prior written notice to another party.
I think May 1 is long enough. I think it needs to be June 1.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
And it becomes, because it's kind of like Michael out there drawing a plan and all of a sudden, he's gotta have bids back in 30 days. And everybody's busy and I'm kind of, I'll start throwing figures at it. Just throwing money at it. You don't get a good deal.
Before you execute the written notice, this week, your 30 days is first week of April.
You can give it longer.
You can give it longer. But, but then you need to prepare your bids, send it out, post the bid that says we would have posted it for bid.
Post everything, June 1.
This is.
Most people organize it their later. They don't still have people just sitting around.
Could we?
Hopefully our service can continue till then.
Well.
There can still be a contract.
We would want, we would want to do it so that at our May meeting, we can open the bids and vote at our May meeting with an effective service date of June 1.
Still think, you know, I think they're kind of throwing figures at it. Yeah, but maybe if the service date's June 1.
I mean, that gives you hope too much.
If you don't give them, Tim said, you got, they, they can do the same, right? They, in 30 days, they just hear that.
Yeah, I mean, if we say we're, we're May 2 first, technically I suppose they can say, well, we're here, we're.
We're in 30 days.
We're terminated.
Then we may be at a place where we have people just kind of throwing money at it because we're in a spot. Where do you get a business as well?
I think we have businesses willing to step in for the entry.
But at, I guess, what price though?
I think we could get them to say, well, step in at the current rate. It's coming up for bid June 1.
I think the guy that was here was there. Yeah, he lets us believe that.
Yes, sir.
Don't you have an ordinance that says you have to take a little bid? Because these guys, they come back.
Lowest responsible bid.
And there are exceptions for certain services, like trash service.
All right, they're safe. Because these guys bid low last time. We weren't happy with them.
They're, I believe, I believe.
Slowest responsible bidder, if you weren't satisfied with their, their responsibility and how they're responding. That wasn't the question.
As old as this question, he was just shocked.
Yes, I do my most, I do one.
And I, again, I should, if that house gave, I mean, because we had to come up with the, I guess, we use the same RPA we had there, you know, for the bidding process, but I mean, if we.
We really don't have anything to put together, right?
Right.
Here it is. Here's our contract. Tell us what rate you're willing to offer. And we don't have a lot of bids back, so you need what they'll get.
So, would, would that occur during this month or would we, would we have to say, okay, we're officially gonna put it out for bid at the next council meeting? Or can we say that?
I think you would have a bid opening at our May meeting with an effective service date of June 1.
I mean, when do we put out the debt though? We put up bid right now or?
Yeah, I think you could book the bid out.
Book the bid out, book it out next meeting.
Fine, we'll clean down next meeting.
Instead of going, fighting with all the people with bid load that we don't want, why don't we pre-qualify, have a pre-qualification standards? If you don't meet these standards, we're not even gonna accept your bid. And so.
Okay, it's how it goes.
So, number one, if we fire you, you know, if we.
If you've been fired in the last two years, you don't.
Then you do not qualify being turned in.
Okay, Rod.
That's living life, sir.
We don't have, what Fort Smith does on, like, you're pre-qualified on streets and municipal projects.
I don't want to be anywhere near the shape Fort Smith's at, at any level.
But I mean, we can, I'd say pre-qualified first. I mean, I don't know as far as they have arrived, I guess. Most of my, just we ever had in there.
I mean, that's what I'm getting at. The contract pretty well says, you gotta meet all these qualifications. And you have to maintain all of these standards. Well, the current guy is not maintaining all the standards that we.
What you're talking is not gonna be known by somebody that's applying for a bid, right? Meeting, keeping up, keeping the standards only after you're hired.
Right. But, but we can make the current contract, here it is, this is our agreement that we're putting out for bid. We will open at the meeting in May. June 1. Now, if the current company says, you can't fire me, I quit. Well, we've got, I think, people that we could call that says, we're putting this out for bid with a service date of June 1. Will you take over the service with me?
Do we have assurances of that that we could?
He just let us to believe that. I don't, I mean, there's no.
I think you would.
In blood or anything like that, but he just, he just let us to believe that we did that. Something came up and we.
So, I asked the attorneys if I could make that call and ask that, because I believe I could issue anything to your test. So, you're taking their word, I suppose, unless they're willing to. I, I feel very confident. I know that prior to all of this assured me that that would be the case. Now, that was a year ago. Are they in the same situation they were then? So, Mike, would we have to special mention to say that we are officially going to submit a, or send out a request for, you know, bids?
No, I think Myers had a set part of the motion. He said, we're gonna send one notice and we're gonna put out. Here's usually the fire today.
What, the, the current counter?
Didn't we have specs when we did it? And couldn't we put out a certain text that we could have last time?
This is not a, I, I don't think this is.
I don't think you just, your contract, your contract is like, isn't it a, a spec that we have to win?
We didn't specify all through that river, like, what, where do you pick up and all that junk crap?
Yep.
I mean, it's got, there's no bid, there's no spec that we would add to that other part of it.
Recycle bins does have to have office. Can you talk about this company? Who are you referring to?
The first one or the one that came in?
I guess the one that came in.
I have to make the card.
It's a, it's a new, well, I say it's new. I've had your first, first one.
Remember, he says there were some changes.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Yeah, there actually, all this could be, I'm not sure that I'm.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I'm supposed to say that. I won't, I guess, but it could be that we don't need to talk about it.
Is there like regulatory changes coming down the pipe?
No, different changes. Companies.
Acquisitions.
Acquisitions, things like that.
Would say.
Was Popper, if she could work something out, move down the aisle or?
Do what?
Was Popper, if she could work something.
Oh, no, she won't. She, she, she knows. She knows. And, and, you know, it's just that, that there could be pictures. These acquisitions take place in management, they need to be. Just out of curiosity, I'm making trucks and people visit, like, there you go, breakfast. Service this city? We did that. I don't know.
We did, and I didn't bring it because I didn't know it was gonna be a form of question, but by the time I'll bring my office in here.
Basically two, wasn't it?
We were looking at two trucks.
Two trucks, yeah. And Tammy driving, honey, where's your friend? Now that she's out.
Boss or guy, in fact.
Yeah. Yeah, you better be going.
But there was, there was at least something like five or six different scenarios. We had automated trucks. We had scenarios where you had the slingers on the back of the truck. Um, that obviously takes more manpower than the trucks that operate with one driver.
Well, automated trucks, Fort Smith's got 1.3 million posted for three trucks. That was in the paper last week.
Oh, and.
1.3 billion.
Not as expensive as a fire truck, but they are expensive.
Orion Waste Solutions. Well, if, if you said that there, it might be a new point, or I was wondering if we, since we are talking very seriously about this, I was wondering if we could address it.
Sure.
Uh, at the next meeting with.
Forever.
So, we could. We basically made contact with this gentleman and see what he meant. I know what he meant, but I don't think I'm liable to give his information out, to be honest with you. Because he really didn't, he didn't get specific. He just told us what he thought it was gonna be good at. So, we'll, we'll contact him tomorrow.
We definitely have to have a backup. We have the worst case scenario.
Sure, we're on that. And the other one was a local, you know, a year ago or whatever, well, back when we were, had put back out for bid and they didn't get it. It was one of those companies and it was, uh.
They did a good job.
And he's.
Do they not have a place here in town now?
I don't know, but I still, I see him in town all the time and he's always looking at me saying, where are you?
Seriously, does he drive one in Walro?
With that semi trucks warehouse?
Oh, God.
He, that is now his. It's, it's all lettered up to.
That building?
Yes. So, he was, he's in the industrial park right there. He's got a big, big sign on the building. That's a.
He's in that building. He's behind us.
He's in that. Because behind him, there's nothing but, uh, the.
Anyway, you just, I don't step up, but I was like, ah.
I'll, I'll call this gentleman more. I'll get, I'll get there. So, you wanna, we have a motion. Where do we have a motion?
One motion.
A modified motion on the floor.
Yeah.
What's saying?
He wants to know sanitation, food limb pickup. I don't think any foods in there.
It does not.
So, if you want to incorporate that in your new bid.
I would like to incorporate that in the new bid. I'll take care of that.
Talking about that, Ford, Dennis would hate.
Dennis is the one.
Dennis is probably the one that passed him.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a little trouble getting the garbage. You gotta do it and pick up, I think. And again, it's just like the recycling deal. You're fixing, adding on some fees.
I'll do it. Sorry.
Maybe they do do it.
They do respect it.
Yeah, truly, they do. It probably costs a lot more to do it. Again, like, everybody puts limbs out of cur.
Liz, Liz is part of your regular garbage pickup.
My suggestion on that would be that you bid on existing contracts and offer supplemental bids for limb pickup.
Right now, limb pickup is technically free, but it's not.
Because you're adding, I mean, you're adding a service that I'm guessing ain't cheap.
It's to be on every person, every, 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 by yard.
Me too.
Thank you very much.
So, I, I.
I don't resign on nothing.
He's praying.
I, I heard Daniel, build, build the limb pickup for the separate. And then we decide if they're running negative.
Yeah, you don't want to climb up anyway. You don't want to.
What's that?
Recycling, it all goes to dump anyways. I mean, it's like, so they're watching it. So, what I'm paying for it. Yeah, we can argue that.
Mr. Great trailer, two chairs, man.
Yes, it'd be nice to get that off the street.
Okay, we.
We don't have a ticket, so.
I'll say, say.
Mr. Brian? Mr. Baker?
No.
Ms. Proud?
No.
Anything?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Um, we, that is.
What is that, oh? But, but, let me make sure I understand what the, what I want to do, wanting to initiate termination. My concern is, is the same they have down there, that we're not out there ready yet.
You're walking into a landmine field?
Well, I don't, I don't mind that too, I don't mind that part, I really don't, uh, cause we get complaints, we get calls, we get those calls, but.
I mean, you're, you're walking into this, you're walking into this unknown moment, any way that you do this. Well, if, if the current provider reads in the paper that he's being considered for termination, he executes the termination. In your thirty days, you're gonna have to call.
Or if the mayor calls him tomorrow and says, the council says, uh, uh, not giving you a raise, then you're.
I mean, the whole thing's in a lurch, no matter what.
But the fact is on, that's on him, that, that, that we have to kind of jump through, you know, maybe hoops to do something.
I don't have any, I, I wouldn't have any concern that, that we could call a guy that's picked up.
Well, okay, so let me ask you, I'm making, with the things doing down here, is your, is your concern that we are gonna get stuck picking up trash, and not, and we're not have service? As we, as we may initiate this contract, or is it?
My concern is that trash doesn't get picked up, and my concern is I don't get complaints because it's going to be served while we're hiring.
Well, it's gonna be, well, that, that's my, okay, so, and I know you may not be able to tell me this, so are you gonna vote no on this at the end of the day, or what? Because it's gonna go up.
Well, sure, no doubt, but I think. We're, we're gonna implement, you know, and I was gonna make sure that, uh, yes, if, you know, our present provider, you know, does that way out, I'm just, I don't care if he's out, we have to do that. I'm, if, if that thing just moves smoothly, do we have enough time, I mean, even if we put it out, you know, this, this week? And, you know, get response with this added tree service, you know, as a supplement, I mean, what does that involve? Have, you know, have we had that, you know, described adequately to say, this is, you know, this is what we want you to bid on?
Yeah, two and a half months. To read a four-page agreement.
Well, well, that's for the trash pickup, but if we're gonna throw tree limb, or whatever, limb pickup, in, in it, here as a supplement.
I mean, that we have today, I mean, it's, all it is, is we, we have an agreement, you can call City Hall, give us an address, and we show up on Tuesday or whatever.
So we're gonna say that, you know, yes, you do tree pickup at.
I don't think we do, Lord, we don't pick up personally. I might be surprised.
Fort Smith has a whole nother truck today.
I think you got, I mean, you're not picking up the trash truck, you'll have to have a truck.
That, well, many, it's got the.
Bring the backup.
Picks that stuff up, puts some bags, does all that.
Yeah, I think that's.
You're gonna be asking somebody that, you know, just runs a trash service, that's gonna be probably, in order to do that, they're gonna have to make arrangements to not pick it up, because if they don't have the equipment for that out there. If you're looking at adding expense, which they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna script the cost somewhere, I can promise you.
Well, yeah, you're right, but I mean, if we are wanting to include that, or at least look at that as part of the bid, I mean, I think we need to, to be prepared to have a description of what we're expecting.
That whole limb pickup thing was done for a, for a generous, generous deal, after that I spent, we just kept going, there's nothing that would have been done, I mean, I understand the people that can't pick up, and also all of them, ninety-five percent of them. Are running out of, can do it, they can all just go off.
Well, and I agree with that, that's what I'm saying, once you made a.
I would not make limb pickup part of the track contract at all.
Uh, uh, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I told you yesterday. First make up the statement point is that I don't think the limb pickup really should, I don't think we should be too concerned for limb pickup, and I'm, I'm not saying it would be nice to get rid of it, but I don't think it's a big picture, see something big picture, really. Two, um, even though I hate the thought of going up on anything, I really do, I think to get the service that, what haunts me, or what gets me every day, is that we don't necessarily get the service that we should get. Now, are we paying for the service we're getting, according to rates that other cities are charging, other companies are charging, we may be indeed getting the service that we're making? I, I don't think that, I don't know, if that makes sense.
Yes, yes, yes.
But, I, but I think that we deserve better than what we're getting, because we do get calls, and I see it, and I, I see it all the time. So I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes, to initiate this contract, so we can see what we can do. And I think it's probably his time to do it.
One of my main, one of my huge concerns, Mayor, is that we've got this agreement, we spent a lot of time as a group, making this agreement to be what we wanted it to be. Had these people sign this thing that says, here's what you're going to do, and now we're just walk, we're just doing this, and left them to do what they want to do. That, if that's what we're gonna do, it needs to say, what's your rate for trash pickup? Well, mine's eight dollars and ten cents, and his is eight and quarter, and I take that ten. The rest of it can be thrown out the window, if we're not going to administer the contract appropriately.
Yeah, and I will say this too, that, I feel, I do feel confident now, I may have to eat my words, I don't like to do that, I may, I do feel pretty, pretty confident that we can cover ourselves, or I would be voting yes. If I thought for a second that we could get some service, cause I don't wanna pick trash up, and, and I sure don't wanna look like, be your thinking today, we didn't have trash picking forever, but, I think, I think we can get taken care of. Whether it's, I don't know that somebody's gonna step in for the rate we're getting now, for a short period of time, but I think we can get service, I think we can get ourselves covered, and I guess I shouldn't think that, but.
So, yeah, if, if, are we going to say, all right, we're gonna pass that on, or are we gonna absorb that, for three months, or, or two months, or, I mean.
Whatever, you mean, if they come in at a different rate?
Right.
We're gonna tell them?
Are we gonna just pass that on, or?
Well, I think that's, I think that's another decision after that, I don't know what's gonna happen. I, I think you would probably need to pass it on, cause you're gonna have to pass it on, like, eventually, I mean, I, yeah, I. Don't wanna sound like I'm riding fence, but I guess I am a little bit, it's, it's hard, it's hard any time you make a decision that people's range of anything is gonna go up. But if we can't get the service that we need, not necessarily what we're paying for, we deserve it better.
We have hope that the service is better.
That's where we're getting, the service that we're getting, which we're not paying.
And there's no guarantee, if it's seventeen dollars a, a person, it's gonna be all.
Unless it's safe to be.
Unless, unless we're done, that's, that's a fair.
That's the only reason, that's another reason why I'd like to do ourselves, is because we can at least police ourselves.
Well, I certainly think it's worth investigating, and we have, obviously, that's.
I, I, I would change on the, what we've had in the past, I mean, I, I was very pleased with, uh, the service, yes, before.
At any day in the future, given the current contract language, at any time in the future, that Tom has researched, and current filled the numbers, and we think it's doable, we have a thirty day out. Whether it's a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now, or whatever, if we crunch all the numbers and decide, we're gonna buy these kind of trucks, and hire these people to do whatever, and go do it ourselves, will we execute our hour? At that point, we've got our, I mean, at that time, we've got our truck spot, or whatever we're gonna do, but if you don't, then you continue.
I thought that's the way it says right now, that we can, with thirty days.
That's what he said, well, but what I'm saying is, you all, you still, even if you rebid it, a totally different company gets it. Six months from now, we decide, we know how to make the numbers work by doing this ourselves, we still have the option to do it ourselves, we haven't locked that option out.
Right.
Yet. Ever.
Red tiger.
Right, sure. And, and I'm glad, we all, and, and, and we know we will, as we investigate that possibility of ourselves, which kind of sends chills up my spine a little bit. But, to, to complement Terry's point, it's not about making money, it's about keeping it, doing it at a cost that you can at least maintain your vehicles, and, and, but.
And provide the service.
And provide the service, and what you talked about is the, okay, you just don't wanna park them out there to lock, cause I, I don't think they do, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, trucks can stand outside, and I think you're gonna do it right, of course, but. Michael, you don't wanna talk real bad, don't you? No, you don't? I don't necessarily, but, anyway.
So, let it be known that the mayor just broke that tie, so.
I just wanna make sure that, he wasn't after the buzzer, really, when you gave me.
We don't, so. So, I guess that does pass to execute right, to make contract where you did.
This is an opportunity for you, Mayor, to stop all complaints.
Well, that, that's what I wanna do, though.
We're gonna take it and say, hey, look, we're serious.
We need to.
We need to act together, or we're just looking for picks or do. For the.
Well, let's be clear, you, you voted, you're wanting this to be executed correctly, you're not wanting me to negotiate.
No, I'm just saying, it's gonna be a, a family saying, hey.
Okay.
But you're, they're surely gonna be part of the rebidding process.
I would say they, they are gonna be part of the rebidding process, right.
Well, and, and if they wanna rebid and come to us with something, it'd be a really good story, it'd be a really good sales pitch, to come back to us and win this bid again. You better have a good plan.
Well, it's like Dan was saying, they, they came in, and they lowered their bid from the previous time, in order to, to win this, this contract.
You better be.
They had some insurance for all the leaky trucks or something.
They were banking on us giving in and giving them limb, but it ain't happening.
You're right.
That was fun, wasn't it?
We talked trash for an hour.
We did talk, we were gonna get out here at eight fifteen. Anything else from council?
Let me say that right after the start of this.
I, I wanted to thank Mr. S, uh, I went to say, um, Cincente. Cincente, Thomas, for being here tonight, appreciate you coming down, and, and, no, he's with the trash company, no. Time's record, thank you for coming. And, is everybody good?
Four.
I do wanna say, and please, uh, pass on, Lance is dealing with a situation with his dad, more specifically, please keep the Terry family in prayers, uh, for, for Terry, everybody knows Terry, you know the world Terry, you're not gonna bring him around. Anything else, at all?
I meant to ask you about the Denver, I meant to ask you about the Denver streets, Dan, what is it?
Well, that's a good question, you know, the letter that I got from the highway department, acknowledging that we get, we got, or we won, or we got the grant, uh, literally said, I have it in there, it says, construction could begin, or, you know, construction, three or four weeks, well, that's been a month ago. So I called last week and asked, and the gentleman I had on the phone, it's the same gentleman that sent the letter, the same one we talked about, the money and all that, that we were over, we needed, call me up, I guess. Uh, was basically saying, sorry, that, that's not necessarily, everything's still good, it's just not gonna start in three weeks, obviously, and he, he was explaining to me, uh, a law, they are mainly new question, that is basically there for, with these contractors, they have a lot of, anymore, they have. Best way I can put it, they have a lot of leeway for when they have to start, they don't have any leeway when the project has to be done. Horstren is the one, is the, is the construction company that has that, uh, they have to be done by next date, and I don't, I'm not officially got that date, I originally told him June, I believe, in June. And then, so that conversation kind of went like, we're not sure, but we'll, we'll let you know as soon as we can, uh, and then Dennis, I believe, talked to anyone, told anyone he said to you, to make it sound like things are, maybe churning.
The project inspector from state called me and asked, was asking inquisitive about the traffic signals on Saturday one, and on Denver and, uh, Gensher, uh, or San Street. And he, I asked him about the start date, and he indicated, well, July, he thought, but then he called me back, because we gotta mix up in translation on the, on which lie for which, and he said, can you get that changed over in a month? So I don't know really what that meant, but it sounded like we were maybe, you know, trying to get started in a month, I'm taking that for just what he said. And he did have a start date for me.
I've seen him out there several times in the last couple of weeks. I'm just curious, I mean.
Yeah, it, it's kind of, it's scary, or it's scary, it bothers me when the date that he got was actually a start date, if you would, I, June or November, is the finish date I got.
Right.
That they all be wrapped up in, so that was like, oh my gosh, this is, and of course, they're not gonna lay out, they're not gonna overlay asphalt in this weather, but, uh, they're gonna do a lot of milling on that project, so. I, I, we expect any day to see something happen.
Said, projects are managed by us, or is it managed by the highway department?
The highway department. And Horstren is the.
Contract.
Contract.
Well, where road be the same?
No, where road is, is us and county.
Any extra asphalt we go over, big basketball court.
For the Baker family?
Who, who?
Sorry, I, I think we had great meetings, thank you all for coming and being a part of it, and congratulations, sir, to you again, that's awesome, and to the whole, uh, balloon team, so. And congratulations, sir.